Okay. Yeah, thank you.
I'm okay. Trying, trying. You know, kids, my kids have me on the run right now. I know.
For...
Kids.
Offspring, wonderful. Can you get outside of the corporate limit?
Yeah. My kids, all my kids, they're like, "I have to go." So...
It's somewhere around there.
Yeah. I don't want them to go away permanently.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, June 26, 2017. I'd like to ask Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott to call the role of the City Council, please.
Jacobson, Fanouken...
Here.
Marquart...
Here.
Fagan...
Here.
Noriko...
Here.
Verbic...
Here.
Favor...
Here.
Smith...
Here.
Seven present.
I'd like to ask Police Officer Keith Arkey to please come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Keith?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer Gerke. We now need to approve the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda as printed? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Fanouken...
Yes.
Marquart...
Yes.
Fagan...
Yes.
Noriko...
Yes.
Verbic...
Yes.
Favor...
Yes.
Smith...
Yes.
Seven yes.
Before we move on to our first item on the agenda tonight, and as we do have a public hearing, I did get a text from Dave Jacobson, who was having continued back problems. His back is hurting him, and so he will not be with us tonight. He said he was going to be watching us on TV, and I hope we can cause as much excitement for David as if he were here, you know?
Don't take his call.
Okay, we have a public hearing now, noting the time at 6:02. This public hearing is on the Community Development Block Grant Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the program year 2016. That's from April 2016 to March 31, 2017. Our Neighborhood Program Specialist Joanne Rouse will make the presentation. Joanne?
Mayor Smith, members of council. The CAPR, or the Comprehensive, or the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Review, is a HUD requirement, and it must be submitted within 90 days of the end of the program year. The document provides information on the accomplishments and the expenditures that were made during the 12-month period. Members of council were given an executive summary that sort of summarized the report for your review. That summary, plus the full CAPR, have been posted on the city's website for 15 days in an effort to secure public comment. The public hearing tonight is the closure of that public comment period. The purpose of this hearing is just to collect public comment. Any comments that are received by the city will be included in the plan and in the final submission that is made to HUD. The CAPR is strictly an informational document. It does not require action by council, but council may ask questions or submit comments. Are there any questions or comments?
Prior to any questions or comments from City Council, are there any folks in the audience who wish to address any questions on this? If not, any questions or comments to Joanne from City Council? Kate?
Thank you for your work on this report. Can you tell me what are the plans going forward to improve the figures regarding the housing rehab grants? I noticed that there was money left over. There was some, you know, mention of that in the report, but I'd be interested in what plans you have for moving forward.
For moving forward, the city will invest in the same projects that we have in the past. As far as the private property rehabilitation, there are plans to increase the marketing on that program, to get more information out to community agencies, on the city website, brochures, because we do have funds available, and we would love to be able to serve people who are income-eligible and need that service. We will also be working on a public facilities project. The one from 2016, which was a large project, was carried into this year, so it will be accomplished this year, which is a big portion of those carryover funds. And public services, again, fund those agencies in the community that provide public services.
For the housing rehab grants, is the information also available in Spanish?
I believe we do have a Spanish brochure someplace. I will...
Okay, because, you know, I would encourage that in working with connexión.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions of Joanne by City Council? We should respond to all comments made during the public review process. Of course, there were few. However, no other City Council action is necessary. Joanne, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your report. I will now close the public hearing at 6:06 PM. Moving on to item number E on tonight's agenda. We are so fortunate that we're going to be able to do what we're going to do over the next couple of minutes. I'd like to ask Fire Chief Eric Hicks to provide a introduction to this item. I'm going to then, at Eric's cue, move down to the front and be participatory in a couple of presentations. Eric?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. First up tonight is we are here to witness the swearing-in and badge ceremony of our newest firefighter, Joe Long. If I can get Joe and his family to come up here, please? Growing up, Joe Long was exposed to the fire service through his father's work as a volunteer firefighter with Kaneville Fire Protection District. During Joe's junior and senior year at DeKalb High School, he took part in the Kishawaki Education Consortium Fire Science Program. Through this program, Joe discovered the fire service and what he really wanted to do for a career path. And he attended classes during his junior and senior year at the DeKalb Fire Station and also the Sycamore Fire Station. And that's when he decided he wanted to be a firefighter in DeKalb. After graduating from DeKalb High School, he has earned, he earns an associate's degree in fire science from Wobunzi Community College, and shortly thereafter, in 2012, he earned his paramedic certification. Joe's work history includes him joining the Kaneville Volunteer Fire Department as a cadet at 17, and he volunteered there for six years. And in 2012, he started working as a firefighter EMT at Fox River Countryside, where he remained there until he was hired by the safety cab just recently in 2017. So Joe tonight is going to be pinned by his wife Caitlin and with her two children. If I can get Deputy Chief, or Deputy Clerk to come up and swear in?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Long...
I, Joseph Long.
Having been appointed to the position of firefighter...
Having been appointed to the position of firefighter...
For the DeKalb Fire Department...
For the DeKalb Fire Department.
In the city of DeKalb...
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb...
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations to Joseph Long. Let's give him another hand. Thank you, Joe. Now we'll move on to another special item proudly to DeKalb, and once again, our Fire Chief Eric Hicks.
Tonight, we're going to talk about some awards that were received downstate by some of our local firefighters. On July 5, 2016, a fire occurred in a home in the city of DeKalb. One off-duty firefighter and 13 on-duty members of the DeKalb Fire Department were involved in the rescue of an unconscious victim from the fire room and extinguishing of that fire. Tonight, we're here to honor their efforts on that day. The DeKalb Fire Department has an internal firefighter award program to recognize personnel for extraordinary work. These awards range from a department letter of appreciation to a department award for valor, and it was felt by us that for their efforts on July 5, they deserved more. So we did nominate them downstate for the State Fire Marshal's Award. At a same morning, on May 9, 2017, in Springfield, Illinois, Governor Bruce Rauner and State Fire Marshal Matt Perez honored 10 members of our organization. Two distinct awards were given. The Firefighter Medal of Honor, which is given, which is the highest-level award in the state, and that was given to firefighter Jared Thorpe for his actions off-duty that day. Also, nine other, eight other members received an award, and those would be Captain Mike Thomas, firefighter Andrew Umano, firefighter Matt Klotz, firefighter John Ritter, Lieutenant Brett Goucher, firefighter Tim Stiker, firefighter Chris Crouppa, and firefighter Todd Adamson. Dutifications, we only have four of these members here today. I'm going to show you a short video of what we experienced downstate that day and also talk about the incident a little bit. So if I can get Jeff Bertell to queue up the video, please?
The Firefighter Medal of Honor is the highest award given by the state of Illinois to a firefighter for an act of outstanding bravery or heroism by which the firefighter has demonstrated in great degree the characteristics of selflessness, personal courage above and beyond the call of duty under adverse conditions with the possibility of extreme personal risk. On the screens, you will see the stories of our recipients.
My name and rank is Jared Thorpe, firefighter, paramedic for the city of DeKalb. I started back, like way back when I was a kid. My dad volunteered in our local town. Just grew up watching him going down to the firehouse. I knew I wanted to be on the fire department, like helping people. So when I was able to, at 16, I joined Hinckley as a volunteer and then started working my way up to be full-time. On that day, I was off-duty, running some errands with my girlfriend. I happened to be coming through town. I heard the tones go off with a carrier pager, and it happened to be open. Heard the tones go off for a structure fire with possibly two people trapped. Ironically, it was like right down the street from where we're at. As I made the corner, saw flames out the second-story window. Obviously, I knew that none of the units were en route yet, so I decided to stop to see if the family out in the front yard. As I stopped, the lady in the front yard told me that her grandson was up in the second story of the house. They couldn't get him out. I decided to make my way up to the second story of the house. I could tell there wasn't that bad of conditions yet, so I tried to go up and see if I can get to him. The door was, couldn't get it open. He was stuck behind the door. Was able to force through onto the door and reach him. At that point, it became really smoky, so I came back down to get a breath and then tried to go back up and get him. Went back up a second time. Conditions had changed, got a lot more smokier. Reached him again, but still couldn't get to him to pull him out. So went back down. By then, the crew was showing up and told them, you know, found there's only one person. Found him using the first bedroom up on the hall, and they went up and made the rescue. So like I said, we got the best group of guys to work with, and I couldn't be more proud to go to work every day with those guys.
Because firefighter, paramedic Jared Thorpe of the DeKalb Fire Department demonstrated an act of outstanding bravery and heroism, he is awarded the Firefighter Medal of Honor.
This is originally going to be, these awards were given to by Representative Robert Pritchard. He's unable to attend today due to be in downstate on a special call. So if I can ask the mayor to come up, he's going to read a short letter from Representative Pritchard, and then we'll show the awards that were given out that day.
Thank you. This is from our Representative Bob Pritchard. Dear Mayor Smith and council members, I regret that I could not be with you tonight as originally planned. I am in Springfield in special legislative session where we're making progress toward a budget and some real reforms. I wanted to add comments to those of Chief Hicks about the Fire Service Medal of Honor ceremony last month in Springfield. I've asked the chief to share the General Assembly certificate signed by your four senators and representatives. The city of DeKalb and its residents should feel proud of the fire department and the men and women who serve them. The awards the two companies and Jared Thorpe receive for saving a life are significant accomplishments and acknowledgements of the professional skills and commitment of our fire service employees here in DeKalb. We can all feel safer knowing such men and women are not only capable of responding to emergencies, but also ready to respond at any place at any time. We would like to add my congratulations, I would like to add my congratulations and thank them for their service. Thank you too to the City Council for providing the support for them to do their jobs. Sincerely, Robert W. Pritchard.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can get Deputy Chief McMaster to come up along with firefighter Thorpe, Captain Thomas, firefighter Klotz, and Ritter. What the deputy chief's going to do is he's going to present the actual award that was given to Jared the day of the event down in Springfield.
Okay, I'm going to present and help present the awards, or I think Jeff will probably hand those out, to these firefighters who are in attendance tonight. Firefighter Jared Thorpe, Firefighter Medal of Honor. That has to make you feel good. It makes us feel good to have people like you with us. Believe me, okay. Now the Citation Excellence Awards. Captain Mike Thomas from Truck Company One. Firefighter, paramedic Matt Klotz from Truck Company Number One. And finally, with us tonight, firefighter, paramedic John Ritter, Truck Company Number One. Before I turn it over to you, back over to you, Eric, I just want to say that I've been on the job now for five weeks. This is my sixth week as your mayor. And I was so fortunate to be able to have some tours with Public Works, with Tim Holdeman, with the police department, with Gene Lowry, and with Eric's. Not only that, was able to visit your palatial abodes in the three fire stations you have, but I was also able to see some of your equipment, some of it out at the airport and other places around the community. And I'm just so fortunate to have been able to see some of the things that a lot of our folks in our community don't see, you know? But believe me, we have some fine men and some white, some fine women in our fire and police departments. They're protecting us, looking out after our safety. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. Let's give them a hand. As the fellows go around the table, I'm going to turn it back over to Eric Hicks.
In front of you tonight, you'll see a program of the actual event that day, and you can see the different awards that were given throughout the state. As you can see, there were only three Firefighter Medal of Honors awards given throughout the state of Illinois. So it's a pretty good accomplishment. We're very appreciative of these awards, and I'm very thankful what these guys do every single day. But I just want to make sure these awards do not overshadow the other 5,600 calls that they run every day. So thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Now we go under item number two, under Special Items and Presentations, and we do have a presentation. Diana Holst from the DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau will make the FY 2017 Human Services Funding Annual Report. Diana is the Executive Director of DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau. Diana?
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the city of DeKalb for the continued support of the DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau, YSB. We've been in service here for over 45 years, starting out as a branch of the city of DeKalb, and then in 1971, joining two other youth service bureaus, being the first initial three youth service bureaus in the state of Illinois. Each quarter, between 40% and 60% of the people that we serve come from the city of DeKalb. And over the past year, from June of 2016 to June of 2017, we have served 684 City of DeKalb residents, providing a continuum of early intervention and therapeutic interventions to help better the lives and relationships of DeKalb County citizens. Lately, one of the most critical programs that we have that has received funding from the city of DeKalb is actually our Crisis Intervention Program. Our Crisis Intervention Program serves youth on a 24-hour on-call basis when they have either run away from their home, are refusing to go home, or have been locked out of their home by their parents or guardians. And we have seen a more complex set of cases lately involving more follow-up and referral linkages, and this at a time when our, our state funding for this program has actually been on hold due to the state budget crisis. So again, the support from the city of DeKalb is really critical at this time. The referrals that we get from Crisis Intervention come mainly from the police, the schools, and from DCFS. And the goal is to provide stabilization for the family and family preservation services to avoid DCFS and court involvement. We've seen 36 cases over this past year, with 19 of them being from the city of DeKalb. Our Youth and Family Counseling is our largest program, and we help youth and their families that are struggling with a number of different issues, including anxiety, depression, school behavioral issues, parenting concerns, family conflict, violence, sexual abuse, self-injury, and just traumatic experiences in general. We have two bilingual therapists on staff to serve our Spanish-speaking families, and our clinicians right now are completing a 70-hour certification program on therapeutic interventions for traumatic stress. So that way, our staff can have the greatest tools and broadest base of skills to help families going through these traumatic issues and help them build healthy lives and relationships so they can have better futures. Another way that DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau is helping improve the futures of DeKalb youth is through the work that we do with the court services, with our diversion and our early risk assessment programs. These are programs that youth can be referred to in lieu of legal ramifications, and they're designed for first-time offenders. So we provide an assessment that shows how likely the youth is to reoffend, and then based off of that assessment, we look at both the protective proactive things in the youth life to build upon, as well as the adverse conditions to help mitigate. And then we refer them and enroll them in any one of our different YSB programs, including several of them, including Youth and Family Counseling, Early Intervention for Drug and Alcohol Use, Anger Management, and YSB's Valentin Community Service Program. For those youth that actually go through the early risk assessment program and complete the services as assigned, there is a 4% recidivism rate as compared to the 20% national average recidivism rate for juvenile offenders. So it's been quite productive of a program. Another way that we're working with court services is we're actually looking to branch off and also target the repeat offenders for juveniles that are already on probation or court supervision, working very closely with juvenile probation officers and having the juveniles go through a 25-week intense course, which really targets the criminal thought process and behavioral issues, utilizing the evidence-based program, Thinking for a Change. Six of our staff went through a week-long training with probation officers, and we are hoping to do a class co-facilitated with juvenile probation starting in September. We've heard a lot of talk about the number of juvenile offenders that are repeat offenders eating up a large amount of police time and resources, and how a relatively small number of juvenile offenders are accounting for a great number of calls for juveniles. And we want to do something that we can to help mitigate this issue. As the Youth Service Bureau here, we're here to serve the youth of DeKalb and look at the needs that the city of DeKalb is currently having, and this is one of the current needs. And so we're looking to do everything we can to step up and meet that need. And again, I thank the city of DeKalb in helping continue our funding and so that we can, as a community, help serve the youth of DeKalb. we can, as a community, help serve the youth of DeKalb. Thank you.
Okay, Diana, before you leave the podium, any comments or questions of Diana? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau Diana Holst. As promised the last meeting, I have a few appointments. There are just a few, I think the city council can attest to that. I would ask if it's the wish of the three council to approve the appointments and reappointments in omnibus form, and you could do that with one motion, but I do need a motion to approve if you feel that is appropriate.
With consent of my colleagues, I'll move that we approve three A through X in omnibus form.
Second?
Been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Kate Noriko. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Mayor, if I could ask, prior to the vote, if we could just briefly recite the appointments?
Absolutely.
It doesn't have to have the terms, but just the position and name.
Oh, okay. Position and name and commission and name, okay. Before we vote. Appointment of Robert Owens as Chair of the Airport Advisory Board. Do I need the term?
No.
Reappointment of Tony Chulick to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Reappointment of Deborah Booth to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. Reappointment of Brad Hoy to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. Reappointment of Susan Johnson to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. Reappointment of Susan Johnson as Chair of the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. Reappointment of Dan Kenny to the Citizens Environmental Commission. Appointment of Dan Kenny as Chair of the Citizens Environmental Commission. Reappointment of Ken Cook to the Citizens Environmental Commission. Reappointment of Claire Cron to the Citizens Environmental Commission. Reappointment of Bill Elecno to the Citizens Environmental Commission. Reappointment of Sharon Scala to the Citizens Environmental Commission. Reappointment of Eric Hicks to the Fire Pension Board for a three-year term. Appointment of Joan Berger to the DeKalb Public Library Board. Reappointment of Wendell Johnson to the DeKalb Public Library Board. Reappointment of Janice Kurtz to the DeKalb Public Library Board. Reappointment of Vernice Edgell-Walden to the Economic Development Commission. Reappointment of Larry Apperson to the Human Relations Commission. Reappointment of Larry Apperson as Chair of the Human Relations Commission. Reappointment of Robert Williams to the Human Relations Commission. Reappointment of Norden Gilbert to the Human Relations Commission. Reappointment of Lisa King to the Human Relations Commission. Reappointment of Christina Atherton to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And reappointment of Christina Atherton as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve these appointments and reappointments. Any further discussion? Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott, roll call please.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
We'll have just a few more, hopefully at our first meeting in July. Suffice it to say that that was a pretty good list. And, you know, I must just add that I think as city council members and as the public, we really need to acknowledge the time that these citizens spend stepping forward and serving as volunteers on our boards and commissions. I certainly thank them. Okay, public participation. Is there anyone registered, or is there anyone who would like to speak to any topic not on the agenda for tonight? You will have your chance if there's an item on the agenda. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Again, for the benefit of those watching and those of you here tonight, the consent agenda is enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items unless requested by a council member. Do, are any of these items, do I ever request to remove any from the consent agenda? The consent agenda items are as follows. Approval of the city council minutes, minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting of June one, two thousand and seventeen. Receive and file accounts payable and payroll through June twenty-six, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of one million eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-two cents. Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash zero seven-seven, authorizing the execution of a worker's compensation lump sum petition and order in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and forty-three cents to Kevin Farrigan. And resolution two thousand and seventeen dash zero seventy-eight, authorizing the execution of the DeKalb County Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Memorandum of Understanding. Again, for the benefit of our audience and for those at home, our city council has been provided copies of all of these items and have had a chance to take a look at them. We now need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Noriko?
Second.
Second by Alderman Favor. Roll call please.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Moving on to item G, items for separate action.
You have to, if we could have a motion to approve the listing on the consent agenda? A motion to approve the listing on the consent agenda?
Okay. A motion to approve the listing on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Noriko?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fagan. Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you, Dean, for correcting me there. Items for separate action. Number one, resolution two thousand and seventeen dash zero seven-nine, approving the final plat of Cornerstone subdivision, and approving certain final plans for Cornerstone. I was informed late this afternoon that Joellen Charlton, our community relation, our community development director, has a small addition to this resolution. We could go through the entire resolution and then we could amend it, but she thought it might be easier if she could just add that addition, and then we could vote on the resolution. Joellen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll explain the, the small difference when I get to the end of the report, so that you can use that information in the formulation of your motion. But as you know, the final plans for Cornerstone subdivision were required as part of the ordinance that was approved earlier this year that granted the approval for the project. Since that time, obviously, a lot has been happening on the site. The demolition of the building has been completed, and some of that work down in the pit of the, the construction site has also continued with the removal of the old foundation and kind of shoring up and putting in the new foundation. So the developer at this point is, is at the point where they can't go any further until the approvals are granted that are before you tonight. So as you might recall, that original development agreement provided that we come back to you with some of the final plans that outline the details that weren't available at that time. The staff report goes through a number of those details, and I'll just hit on some of the highlights of those requirements. Four-sided architecture was something the council talked about. As you recall, we saw some really nice pictures of the north and west elevations of the building, and there was concerns that we wanted to make sure that the materials and the windows and everything on the south and east sides of the buildings were, were similar. The only thing that I'll point out that, that might look a little different is on the eastern elevations, the east side of the building contains some of the public aspects of the, the apartment building complex. So you have the office and the entertainment room back in that location. So rather than having kind of the ceiling-to-floor commercial-grade windows in exhibit one, you can see that eastern elevation, and it includes a higher window in those areas. Again, it just provides for a little bit of privacy for the residents who are using those rooms. Another element that was required is that some kind of a decorative element be added at the top of the building elevation. On the top of page two, you can see that a decorative cornice has been added to the top of the building with the similar types of light-colored material that are used on the other parts of the building. The ordinance also included provisions that lighting standards be, or utilize a consistent standard, so the wall packs that are on the buildings, as well as the lighting standards that are freestanding, ground light standards in the parking lots, need to be unified. The wall standards are all unified. We do need to finalize some of the items for the pole-mounted lights when we understand a little bit more whether we're gonna move forward with the First Street improvements that we talked to the council about a few weeks ago. We are moving forward with the traffic consulting engineer and expect to be bringing that back to you, but at the, at such time as we're ready to forward that recommendation, we'll be looking at providing you with more information on the ground lights. Onings and signs shall be consistent for the building was another requirement. You can see in the elevations provided on page three, that they are proposing to incorporate consistency in their onings on both the north and west elevations. Something new that you didn't see in the first elevation was the Cornerstone DeKalb Building Identification Sign at the top of the building. Those signs are permitted as part of our sign code and the overall square footage that is available for wall signs, so he can have those wall signs there. It will be up to him then to distribute the, the balance of the square footage that's available to the other tenants. But we've done a brief calculation that's provided in the report, and are confident that he can work within those guidelines. The door on the northwest corner of the building shall be recessed, and I provided a, a picture of what that's going to look like. Basically, the door itself is gonna be on an angle between First Street and Lincoln Highway. There is a pier that's there for support of the building at the very corner, but behind that pier is where that cutout will occur. We are also to provide final details on the location of security cameras and fiber optic service and Wi-Fi. Those are items that the resolution that's included for your consideration provides various city staff with the opportunity to work with him on finalizing those items. We've also provided, made provisions for public utility easements if they are necessary on the site to be granted. We did confirm that bollards and curbing, I think there was a concern initially whether the pedestrian walkway on the east side of the building not be treated like an alley, that we didn't want a curb cut, we don't want people driving through that area, which is only about ten feet wide. The plans themselves provide curbing barriers, both on the north and south sides of the building, to prevent that from happening. The overhead wires need to be relocated and from the alley, so currently the existing property had the buildings on the north, and then the alley, and then the Barb City Bagel Building. That alley, as you might recall, is being vacated as part of the plat of subdivision that's actually on, included in the resolution for your consideration. A parking lot agreement shall be finalized that accomplishes some of the things that were outlined in the original agreement, and those terms, we're gonna continue to work on with the developer and bring that particular part back. Again, that's something that relies a little bit on what we do or don't do with the First Street project that's coming back to you shortly. The developer did provide some indication that he's going to be providing bike racks and a bicycle parking area, and that location will be in the, in the area, in the common area between the, in the U-shaped part of the building. Also, as part of the, the approval, we'll be looking at the common garbage dumpster that is currently located just off of the developer's property, and we'll be working with him to finalize the details of that, of that design and construction. Moving on, we, we had outlined a couple of options for the council's consideration. One is to approve the resolution as presented, which outlines all of the items that are enumerated in the staff report. Also, the, the second option was to approve the resolution with some modifications. So as in any project, we oftentimes find ourselves responding to last-minute things, and just today, we received a call from the developer who's working with ComEd on the relocation of those overhead power lines that are currently in the alley. Those lines are intended to be relocated to the south and cross the city's property at the south end in the parking lot that we currently own. So what I'm asking the council to do is to amend section two B of the resolution to add item number eleven, which will be XI, Roman numeral eleven, and that would give staff the authority to negotiate an easement agreement with ComEd or a public utility easement agreement for the location of, relocation of the overhead wires to the area that's indicated. So, again, I don't think you have a motion on the floor, so if you do make a motion to approve the resolution, we would ask that your motion include that amendment. And again, that's an amendment to section two B, to add item number eleven, to authorize staff to negotiate a utility eas, a public utility easement agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have about what's before you.
Pat?
I'd just like to say, I'm glad you got the recessed on the front door. That's, was a concern to some people for that corner, and I want to thank the developer. John, thank you for doing that.
Kate?
I just have a general question. It appears that everything is moving along pretty expeditiously. Is the project pretty much on target in terms of the estimated timeline?
It is. You know, we keep pretty close contact with John. A lot of my days begin and end with a phone call from John. And he does have his construction permit documents in for review, and I understand that those are really close to being approved. So he is on target to finish the demolition work in the pit that he's still working on. His plan should become available for full release of the permit soon. This approval needs to be granted in order to issue those permits, so that he is very much on target.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I also appreciate the efforts that were made to do the demolition in as quiet a way and, you know, as clean a way as possible. There's, there's no way getting around the fact that, you know, demolitions create noise and chaos for a while, but I think, you know, sincere efforts were made to minimize the impact on area businesses. So thank you.
John, John has been very responsive to any question or concern that has come up. I mean, it's a development project, you're gonna have issues, and the important aspect about John that I've appreciated during this project is he's available, reachable, and he takes care of it right away.
Any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion then to approve this resolution, including the provision of the ComEd Commonwealth Edison scenario described by Joellen.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? Any discussion from anyone in the audience? If not, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joellen. Item number two, resolution two thousand and seventeen slash zero eight zero, receiving and filing the FY two thousand sixteen point five, comprehensive annual financial report, audit report and management letter. I'd ask a motion for one of the aldermen to open the item up for discussion with a motion. motion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fanouken?
Second.
Second by Alderman Markwart. We now have a report on this from our interim finance director, Jeff Wilkins. Jeff?
Good evening. First, first I'd like to recognize the staff that did the yeoman's effort to put this together. Our former finance director, Kathy Haley, Robert Miller, our assistant finance director, and Susan Hauman, our accountant. They went from basically an audit of 16 to a budget of 16.5 to an audit of 16.5. So they were very busy during that period of time. So I'd like to recognize them. And also applaud the city for its commitment to transparency as you apply to GFOA for the distinguished presentation awards for the CAFRA and the budget both. So I wanted to do that before. And then now, Brian LeFever, he's with Sickich, he's a partner with Sickich, who is the signed partner for our process, audit process. So I'd like to turn it over to him to give a quick presentation on your, on your financial statement for year ending December 31, 2016.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. On behalf of Sickich, I'd like to thank the mayor and members of city council for inviting us to present some brief comments on the comprehensive annual financial report for your short six-month, year ended December 31, 2016. The comprehensive annual financial report consists of three sections. An introductory and statistical section are the beginning and the end, and those are non-audited sections. And then the financial section is the audited section. And what makes it a comprehensive financial, annual financial report are those, those first and third sections, which a lot of work is done, especially in the statistical section by the city staff. Within the introductory section, as Jeff alluded to, Roman numeral three, and if you're in a PDF, it'll be, you know, probably 20 pages into the report, is the award that the city received for its CAFRA for the June 30, 2016 year end. I believe that was the 23rd consecutive year that the city received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. As leaders of the city, you should all be commended for participating in this program. It's very well recognized in the local government industry. And this is the highest level of financial reporting within the, the local government community. The financial section, as I mentioned, is the second section. So if you do have a hard copy and you turn to the financial section tab, the first document you'll find is on Sickich's letterhead. And this is where we give our opinion on the financial statements. In order for us to give an opinion on the financial statements, we're required to follow two sets of standards. The auditing standards, which are issued by the AICPA, tells us the types of procedures that we need to perform when we're conducting our audit. And then the financial reporting standards are issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. And GASB tells us what this document needs to look like, what the statements need to look like, et cetera. As a local government, you're required to follow the GASB reporting. Once we follow those two sets of standards, we can then issue an opinion on the financial statements. We're pleased to present an unmodified opinion. What that means is that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. Within the auditor's report, which is three pages, you'll note that on the third page, there's a paragraph that references other reporting required by government auditing standards. That specifically is referencing a second document, which is the single audit report, which is a document or a special compliance audit that's required by the federal government any time that you expend more than $750,000 in federal funds in any particular reporting period. I say reporting period because even in the six-month period, the city expended $836,000 in federal funds. And that's, and that's also a commitment to, to you all for being involved in programs that the various federal agencies feel are worthwhile to participate in. There's, there's not as many local governments that are subject to a single audit as there were years ago. Within that single audit report, there's two opinions that we also give in that report. One is a unmodified opinion on laws and regulations that could have a material impact on the financial statements. The second piece then is where we test a specific major program. This year was the Mass Transit Grant. And we also had an unmodified opinion on compliance with that major program. Finally, there's also a separate document related to the two, the two city tax increment financing districts. We're also required to do a compliance audit related to those. And we had an unmodified opinion for the TIFs as well. So all, all good news in terms of the, the reports that we've issued. I'll walk you through just a couple of things in the document and then be happy to answer any questions. As you know, the CAFRA is a large document. It's intended to be transparency, so it's our job to tell you what the highlights of those documents is. So if you choose not to read the entire document, you know where to start. The executive summary for the CAFRA is the management discussion analysis. The reason I always direct folks to that is because that was written by the city. The city gets an opportunity to explain some of the whys of its own financial statements in that document through a prescribed format, but yet enough latitude to explain to you, the users of the financial statements, how things compared from one year to a six-month period. It's a little bit of a challenge, but you get a general flavor for how the financial statements are laid out. And because this document's prepared by the city, it becomes an insert in the final document, has its own separate pagination. And after the 13 pages of the management discussion analysis, you come to the first audited financial statement, which is on regular page number four, which is the Statement of Net Position. I like to refer to the Statement of Net Position as the global view financial statement. If you take all of the funds that you budget and appropriate for and consolidate them all into two columns consisting of governmental and business type activities, for all of your assets, including capital assets, all of your liabilities, which effective two fiscal periods ago, include the net pension liability for your IMRF police and fire pension plans for the first time, you know, we're going on, on the third reporting period for that. That's what you have with the Statement of Net Position. It's not a super user-friendly document. It's not how you budget and appropriate, but it is required to receive that unmodified opinion. And you are compared to your peers to a certain degree with this presentation. You'll notice one item, the unrestricted net position is a big negative number. That's simply because you're putting the net position of your pension, net pension liability onto the financial statements causes that to be negative. The good news is, and we'll see that in the pension area, is that you're funding the pensions exactly as in recommended by your actuaries for the police and fire pension plan. And then statutorily, as it comes from your actuary, the state's actuary for IMRF. So you're doing, you're doing what is recommended by those actuaries in funding those pension plans. Within just a couple of the statements, Page 10 is the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balances for Governmental Funds, which includes your main operating fund, your general fund. During the six-month period, your, your revenues were just higher than your expenditures by $25,000. You then had some required transfers for some debt service payments. So overall, you had a decrease in fund balance of $255,000. If you compare that to your budget and also read your management discussion analysis, you actually projected to have a budget or a, a loss of, if you will, of expenditures over revenues of $450,000. So $200,000 to the good compared to the plan for the year, leaving you with fund balance in your general operating fund to begin the fiscal year that you're operating in now of just over $9.2 million. Your operating statements for your other main operating funds, your water fund and your airport fund are on Page 15. So you'll see a slight decrease in your overall net position, both for the water operations and the airport operations. Keep in mind that these are reported on an accrual basis, meaning your depreciation on your capital assets is reported as, as an expense, as opposed to the dollars that might have gone out in capital outlay during the fiscal year. So do caution you in looking at those numbers. The last statement to, to bring your attention to you before I show you where the information you can find related to your pension plans, if you turn to Page 19, Page 19 is a consolidated statement, income statement for the two pension trust funds that are managed by those separate pension boards here locally, the police pension plan and the fire pension plan. Both of the plans, six-month period was a very good period for investment activity. So overall, you had an increase of just under $5.1 million to the total of those two plans. So as of December 31, the police and fire pension combined were at $57.2 million in assets at market value. Further back in the report, you can find the separate information for police and fire separated out on Pages 139 and 40. The last section I would bring to your attention this evening, before I opened up for questions, would be on page, beginning on Page 87, is information related to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Page 87 shows for each of the last three fiscal periods where the new GASB standard was effective, shows you the actuarially determined contribution and then the actual city or employer contribution. You notice you're always contributing exactly what the actuary recommended because that's, you contribute each and every payroll based on a percent. And that percentage was calculated for the city itself. And you put those dollars in. So you can see the budgetary impact there on Page 87. Page 88 and 89, which are facing each other for the police and fire pension plan, you can see that the city has essentially put in close to what the actuary recommended for the first three periods that you see. And then the city put in additional dollars into those plans for the six months ended December 31, 2016. That's, that's one piece of the plan is, did we put in during the year, did we put in what the actuary recommended? The other piece is the health of the plan as well, as begins on Page 90. And that is to say, we have two pieces of the equation to a pension plan. The actuary calculates what they estimate to be the liability for all the active members plus the, the pensioners that are drawing a pension from the plan. That liability is estimated by the actuary using their, their techniques and their assumptions to come up with the total estimated liability. That's compared to the assets that are in the plan. The math then becomes the net pension liability. Oftentimes, we look at a pension plan based on how much we've filled the tank. So our assets divided by the total liability says what percentage we have set aside. If you look for IMRF through December 31, 2016, on Page 90, three, three lines up from the bottom of the page on the right-hand side, can see you're 83.2% funded for IMRF, up from 81.8% one year prior to that. For the, on Page 91, the police pension plan was up from 47.1% to 47.9% funded. And then on Page 92, the fire pension plan went from 37.4% to 39.1% funded. You will note that both police and fire pension plans had changes in the assumptions that were used related to mortality. There's been new mortalities that, tables that have been released that say, that were living longer. That causes your pension liability to go up, so when those assumptions are changed. The last piece of the puzzle for the police and fire pension plan is, as I mentioned, the rate of return for a six-month period of 5.12% for the police pension plan. And then on Page 94, 5.93% for the fire pension plan. In conclusion, the audit went very smoothly and we received all the information on a timely basis from the city, right on target where we anticipated presenting this information to you tonight. And as Jeff mentioned, no small task, given the, the city's change in fiscal year, which required a number of resources for the city to deploy to make that fiscal year-end change and then still be ready for the audit, like I said, on a timely basis. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have this evening.
I was able to chat with Kathy Haley prior to her coming, and I realize some of the idiosyncrasies, I guess, if you will, when you go from one fiscal year to another. I also feel that it's good to have two sets of eyes look at this. And I, I realize Sickich is looking at it and our folks are looking at it. I'd be interested in Jeff's view. I know you've only been here a few weeks, but you've been around the block with these kinds of statements in your, in your past life, in your past career. Give us, could you give me your, your take on where we are? And, and I certainly respect, is it Brian?
Yes.
Sickich's report, but I'd like to hear it from, from you.
As far as where, well, the, as far as the reports themselves, I mean, these are well put together reports and very, very comprehensive. So, and not all communities do a full CAFRA. They might do audited financial statements, which wouldn't have nearly the detail that you have in the beginning and not nearly the statistics that you have. So, so this is, this provides a lot of information for, for citizens. So I think it's, that's fantastic. Obviously, though, as far as the position, you know, Brian had just touched on the liabilities of the pensions. You know, that's, that's going to be, that's going to be an ongoing challenge. And you have to be committed to that. And it's not going to happen overnight. You know, it didn't happen overnight to, to get to the situation that you're in. And it's going to, not going to be overnight to get out of it. So, but, but I will say, the other part is, is with the, just a half a year, the, the aspect that we were, we were better than budget by $200,000 is definitely a good, a good thing. But, but it's, it's difficult to compare a half a year to a whole year. So, so that's, it's, that's hard to really have a conclusion on that. There was one statement in here about how our, our fund balance had increased to like 40, 40-some percent. That might be a little bit, you know, a little bit misleading in that, you know, there was, on half a year, you're just not going to incur all the expenses. So, but it was definitely better than projected. So, you know, so that's definitely a, a good thing.
Yeah, my question wasn't to get into the minutia of this. You know, we're fortunate to have Mike Verbic, who was on our financial, finance advisory committee. Mike, do you have any first glance view of this that you'd like to share? And if not, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but tell me. I put you on the spot.
No, it's, it's great to have this transparency and this much information. And certainly would look forward to the response from our finance advisory committee.
Any further discussion from anyone? Jeff and Brian, are you, does that complete your report? Anybody from?
Yes.
Excuse me. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. If there be, if there is no further discussion, I'd like to ask the deputy city clerk, Ruth Scott, for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Item Number Three, Resolution 2017-081, authorizing the Public Works Director to extend the professional services agreement with WBK Engineering LLC for city engineer services in an amount not to exceed budgeted amounts and for a period not to exceed 180 days. Before we have our public works director, Tim Holdman, to make some comments, I entertain a motion to get this on the floor.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markwart?
Second.
Second by Alderman Favor. Tim Holdman.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to give you an update and to request authorization to extend the professional services agreement with WBK for city engineer services. As you'll recall, in 2016, the city eliminated the project implementation engineer position. And early in 2017, the city engineer resigned, leaving the public works department with no engineers on staff. As a result of that, we interviewed five firms locally and came back with a recommendation in February, February 27 of this year to undertake a, to authorize an agreement with WPK. WBK has been working with city staff since then. They have provided excellent services. We have monitored their activity and been very judicious in the assignments that we have given them in order to maintain the budgeted amount. have given them in order to maintain the budgeted amounts. The budgeted amount for engineering services is one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. We are averaging about twelve thousand, three hundred dollars a month right now over the three months that we've been engaged, which is below the budgeted amounts. The average budget that we're targeting for is about thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. So we're about fifteen hundred dollars per month lower than the budgeted amounts. I've been working directly with the principal from the firm, Greg Chismark, who has extensive city engineer experience. City council has seen him as well, give several presentations. Greg was very instrumental in getting some of our proj, continuing advancement of some of our projects. Greg and I worked with John Laskowski to identify some of the critical issues with our public infrastructure projects. We have about ten major projects and so it took us several weeks just to identify the issues surrounding those projects, remembering that Greg and his staff are working on average five or six hours a day for us. So, but we have been able to do that. We've also made significant advancement in organization of some of the records that engineering had accumulated over the years and so we're making great advancements at. Greg and his staff are also helping us on day-to-day engineering requests and support of our staff. And so on that side of the city engineering equation, the public side and the day-to-day side, we feel very comfortable with where we are. What we haven't done much on is thinking about on the private development side. There is engineering tasks and requests that have to be fulfilled on that public or private development side, primarily site plan reviews. And what we'd like to do is work with community development, public works and community development working together to kind of develop a plan to address that part of city engineering. Okay? It's not as extensive as the public engineering is, but it's still very important in the overall plan going forward to provide city engineering services. So that's why we've asked for the extension of one hundred and eighty days. What our plan would be is to come back on or before August fourteenth with a specific recommendation for addressing city engineering, that's both public works and community development engineering, and then move to implement that plan in the fall and winter and have something implemented by the end of this year. And so that's why we want the one hundred and eighty days. First is to finalize the plan for city engineering and then actually implement that plan, which would mean either recruiting and rehiring an individual to provide city engineering within the city or going out for requests for qualifications and selecting an engineering firm to do that on a contract basis. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Fanouken.
Tim, I noticed that the one hundred and eighty days takes us to the last eight or nine days of December. Why don't we just do it through the end of the fiscal year up to December thirty-first unless that's, exceeding one hundred and eighty days would be a problem? I just think that'd be, I, I think I would like to propose an amendment that it, this would be through the end of the fiscal year.
Excellent. That would be, yeah. Okay. We've had an amendment to the motion authorizing the agreement extension through December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Markwart to amend this motion, the original motion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
And this is roll call on the amendment.
A roll call on the amendment, that is correct.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Now we go back to the original motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Nothing else, Tim, for, for you?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Roll call, please, on the original motion.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
I'm confused.
This would be on the original motion as amended.
Oh, as amended. Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Item number five, Resolution two thousand, oh, I think Resolution four. Yeah, Resolution number four, two thousand and seventeen dash zero eight-two, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman for construction of four thousand and fifty feet of water main in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Before Brian Favor, our utility superintendent, describes this, I entertain a motion to open the item for discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Favor?
Second.
Second by Alderman Verbic. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is seeking approval and agreement with Baxter and Woodman for construction engineering services relating to the water main replacements that we have scheduled for this year and that were approved at the last council meeting. Baxter and Woodman has provided the design work for the, for the work that is to occur and so they're very familiar with the scope of the project. Work is scheduled to begin mid-July, within the next couple of weeks. There are multiple locations, which include work in actually three wards, wards three, four, and five will have water main replacements being performed. That's East Sunset Street, Lewis Street, South Eleventh Street, and Maplewood Avenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the engineering services or the water main replacements.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions of Superintendent Favor? If not, roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you, Brian. If I could mention one more thing?
Sure.
The utility division is planning a meeting on July fifth, Wednesday, at six P.M. to discuss the, the project in greater detail for either the council members or the mayor or our residents that would want to hear more information about the projects. That's July fifth at six P.M. at the Water Division, the Utility Division located at twelve sixteen Market Street. And it's really just an opportunity for our residents, especially the ones that will be affected by, by the work, to, you know, just to answer questions relating to those projects or potentially future projects. If there's areas that you hear from constituents that, you know, maybe they feel that their water main needs to be replaced, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to open up to the public to discuss that.
Yeah, these are the kind of special meetings I think we need in our city, Brian, and I would urge you to chat with staff here, Lauren or whomever, to see that this not only gets in the, perhaps in the newspaper or news release, but gets on our website and some of our other media outlets.
Sure. And we've sent out a letter to the residents that are affected and also mentioned that the meeting and then also we've posted on our website, I believe, and Facebook, it has been posted. So we're trying to get the word out and I just wanted to bring it to your attention as well.
Great. Thank you. Moving on. Item number five, Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash zero seven six, authorizing a purchase on a state of Illinois Department of Transportation public transit vehicle state bid price contract with Midwest Transit Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of three paratransit minivans in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you recall, this was one of the items that was on the agenda for our last meeting, but we pulled that off because we wanted the DSAT to take a look at this. And speaking of DSAT, we have our man, Brian Dixon, here. Before he makes some comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to bring this up for discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markwart?
Second.
Second by Alderman Favor. Brian Dixon.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Smith and Council. I bring before you a request for the purchase of three minivans for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. For Vax, existing three mini, minivans have exceeded their, their useful lives. In fact, two of them are no longer operational. So we're looking to move forward on the purchase of three new minivans to replace those existing minivans. Staff had, has already gone through the FTA process for approval of the purchase of these minivans along with several other paratransit vehicles, which we will be bringing forward in the near future. We're moving forward a bit quicker on the minivans because they are being pulled and being off the market and being retooled and so we wanted to get this order in as quickly as possible. As noted, we pulled it last agenda to bring it forward to the DSAT's policy committee and they reviewed the purchases and have approved them. And as noted, we have the FTA funding to fund the entire purchase of these minivans. We go through the IDOT Consolidated Vehicle Procurement Program. This is a program for rural and urban transit agencies to purchase mainly paratransit vehicles. We go through, we elect to go through IDOT because the FTA has an extensive list of requirements and we don't have the, the staff time or expertise to go through and to adhere to all those requirements. So we prefer to go through an order on the, the IDOT contract with Midwest Transit for these vehicles. So as noted, we are seeking approval from council to move forward with submitting a purchase order to Midwest Transit on the, the state of Illinois contract for the purchase of these three minivans.
Thank you, Brian. I've learned so much over the last several weeks as you're, you're mayor, probably more than I ever thought I'd ever know about transportation and buses and all that, but you know, we're very fortunate to have Bill Fanouken, who is, his transportation, I think is his middle name, and he is on the DSAT's board and is very helpful to me and I know to others on city staff as it relates to transportation issues. Are there any comments or further questions?
Just, if I may, real quickly.
Mr. Transportation himself.
No. Just the, the IDOT bidding process for these vehicles is very slimmer with what we've done with police vehicles, buying them off the state bid. It certainly makes sure that it meets all the needs. I am personally familiar with Midwest Transit. They're a very reputable vendor. Does a very good purchase and we should move forward.
That's why we need you right where you are, Bill. Any further discussion or questions of Brian or Bill? If not, roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carried. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Number six, Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash zero eight-three, authorizing a fuel supply branding agreement with World Fuel Services, Ascent Aviation Group, Inc. for aviation fuels and services to the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport from June twenty-nine, two thousand and seventeen through June twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty. Our airport manager, Tom Cleveland, will be at the podium in just a second to explain this to us. I entertain a motion to get this on the floor.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko?
Second.
Second by Alderman Markwart. Tom Cleveland.
Mayor, council, thank you. Every two to three years, the city of DeKalb sends out a request for proposals for a fuel supply to the major fuel suppliers of the country to supply aviation fuels to DeKalb Airport. This year, we see, we received four bids from Avfuel, Aeroenergy, Epic Aviation Fuels, and World Fuel Services, Ascent Aviation Group. After thoroughly evaluating all of these bids, we come out, we came up with that the Ascent Aviation Group was the best value for the city of DeKalb to supply fuel to the airport. World Fuel Services, Ascent Aviation was not the low bid, they were second low bid, but again, they, they, with what the services they would provide to the city and the airport became, it is the best value for us. And here are a few of the, the bullet points. Global networking, global customer base, global marketing, they have free training and new hire training for the line personnel or fuelers. Their fuel terminals on the south side of Chicago, which is very close. Twenty-four hour jet fuel delivery, low credit card fees. The Phillips credit card is zero percent, which is nice when they use that for us. Free equipment when needed and again, we're doing this jet fuel incentive program. If we did get a whole bunch of traffic in at one time, we could call them up and we could have another fuel truck sitting there within twenty-four hours. They have a large U.S. corporate base that uses World Fuel. They have marketing incentives for us and support. Their co-op pays for marketing events, uniforms and clothing for the line personnel that fuel. They have competitive fuel pricing, their branded Phillips fuel, which is very well-known in the industry. They have aviation conference support where we go out and market the airport, market, market our fuel prices. They, they support us doing that. And they have quality control inspections that they come out every two, two, two times a year to inspect our fuel farm, fuel and personnel. So World Fuel Services and Ascent Aviation, again, provide the best value for the city of DeKalb. Again, they're not the lowest fuel price, they're second to the bottom. So I'm gonna, I would recommend that World Fuel Services, Ascent Aviation Group, we go with a three-year contract with them and I'll answer any questions.
Yes, Alderman Favor.
So you had mentioned, that was, that was a question that was gonna, that came to my mind is, will this or does this have any impact on our low-margin fuel pilot that we're doing now and then should we go forward if it, if it becomes a success and we go forward, is there any impact by choosing one of these vendors?
Yeah. What, what World or Ascent Aviation Group can do for us, again, they have marketing people that help us market our airport and our, our fuel. So again, it's, it's global, so we can put it anywhere. You know, if we're trying to get a, an Asian or European company to come to DeKalb, they're gonna help market it for us. You know, so they, they are very well-known in the industry and they, they do help us market our own airport.
But there wouldn't be any impact if we decided to continue with the, with the low-margin fuel program?
Mm-mm.
I mean, they're, the price we pay them is regardless of what we sell it for.
Correct. And we're with them right now, so no, there's no impact. Again, we can get fuel within twenty-four hours though, for the jet fuel.
Is, I don't know if anybody else has a question. Is Epic, are they, is that one of the, the benefits that they, over Epic, is that their twenty-four hour delivery?
Epic has twenty-four hour, but their fuel terminals are farther away.
Okay.
So again, we, I did ask for a sixty-day extension, you know, sixty days ago, because all these bids were so close. We really had to evaluate these, really see which one would be the best value for the city of DeKalb. So that's why it took us so long, it was very close.
And some of these items that you call intangibles means a lot to you, it sounds. And some of these items that you call intangibles means a lot to you, it sounds like, as it relates to getting the best bang for the buck, if you will.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
And Mayor, if I could, just one other thing.
Sure.
Just to let you know, a quick note, that this month, we've sold about three times the amount of jet fuel. We were up to about eighty-six hundred gallons when we usually sell about 3,000. So we're, it's not there yet, but it's, it's trending the right way. So I just wanted to let you know.
Good.
So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't believe there are any, there is any new or unfinished business prior to getting reports in terms of communications from our city council members. Is there anybody in our audience who prefers to make any public comments? If not, we'll go to Communications. Alderman Fanouken.
I'd just like to wish everybody a very safe and happy Fourth of July holiday. Please be careful out there. Pay attention to what the fire department shares with in terms of fireworks and be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Markwart.
Like to say thanks to the Celebration Corral for their program over the weekend over at NIU Patriotic Cantata. Did a fine job. And also mention that First United Methodist Church, their Summer Lunch and More program is in full swing Tuesdays through Fridays. So they offer lunch, homework help for the kids, so on and so forth. So if you want to take advantage of that. Thanks.
Thanks. Pat?
I've got two. One, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to the town hall meeting. I think it went fairly well. Nobody, everybody left with a smile on their face. The second is, I'd like to say, early this week, I was out of town and we had a fire on Prospect. The fire department was there. I, my wife was across the street. She sent me a picture when the fire department first arrived. By the time I got back in town, they were just cleaning up and finishing up, and I wanted to say an excellent job.
Thank you, Pat. Kate?
No, report.
What?
I know, it's a first. Maybe you couldn't, you know, I'm hungry. I want to get home.
Mike?
Ward six, a huge shout out and thank you to the DeKalb Park District. We have an outstanding new playground at Mason Park in the sixth ward, and a lot of children out there playing, noticing much more children out than previously on the old playground. So thank you very much, Park District. Secondly, my comment would be, sign, sign everywhere a sign. And I've copied Mayor Smith, and we have signs that sprout out in the public way all over the city. And I noticed one just recently. The same company has signs all over the sixth ward, all over the City of DeKalb, Sycamore, and I noticed signs in Genoa from the same company, I'm sure expectantly without a permit. But it leads me to a point of the notion of agenda building. So as these things come up, could we consider an item on every agenda called agenda building for bringing up these kinds of things that come up without tasking staff any more than, than each of us as an individual? I would like consensus from Council on these issues or opportunities that come up.
Thank you, Mike. It's about that Verbic for Sixth Ward sign that I, no, no.
Is that still out there?
Just joshing you. Okay, Tony?
No report.
Kate, I know you're hungry, but I've got just a few things to say. Today, early this morning, 8:30 or so, Mohammed Labari, who is very involved with the Islamic Center of DeKalb, brought a big card in. Thank you. And I know Gene Lowry also received one over at the Police Department. And I'd like to read this. It's a very short paragraph. "On the behalf of the entire Muslim community of DeKalb, we wish to say thank you for your service. As we celebrate the end of our holy month of Ramadan with a celebration called Mubarak, we feel truly blessed that we're protected by a team of people who are great at what they do. A team of dedicated, passionate, and caring professionals who look out for the citizens of our beautiful city of DeKalb. During the holy month of Ramadan, we felt safe, especially in our late-night prayers, knowing that you're nearby and checked up on us to make sure we were all right. As a small token of appreciation, we hope that you share the joy of celebrating our holy, our holiday with some delicious sweets." I think they're all gone. You guys missed them. We did take those downstairs. They were excellent, yep. Enjoy and thanks again for your service. You are much appreciated. I'm talking about food, yes. But I'm going to leave this card here if anybody would like to see that. So we thank our Muslim community for that. And maybe Gene will have a comment or two on that also. I just want to make a shout out to Judy Schneider and our Public Works Department. If you've looked at our flower planters lately, gosh, are they beautiful. You know, you drive down Lincoln Highway and other places, they are really fantastically colorful. Mike, you mentioned the Celebration Corral, wonderful Celebration Corral over the weekend, as was Greek Fest at Hopkins Park. We have the band concert coming up tomorrow night. We have a Fourth of July fireworks and band concert next week. The Drum and Bugle Corps will be coming in mid-month. Kishawaki Fest will be coming in mid-month. Gary Mullis and his Country Music School Supplies Drive is going to be held down at the High Rise on Taylor Street for school supplies. So we have a lot of things going on in the next 30 days, and I'm sure I didn't mention everyone. I want to let the folks know at home that we consider, consider, continue to work very, very hard on economic development. We said we were going to do that. We are doing it. There are so many projects that Joellen Charlton and her crew are working on, and we really appreciate the support of those who have come forward and said, we want to locate in DeKalb, Illinois. Whether that be in downtown Sycamore Road, we're still pounding out the fine points of the Northwestern Medical Agreement out on Bethany Road. We have renewed interest in some of our industrial parks, and we're working very closely with the Economic Development Corporation. We also are working with our citizens. You know, we do get emails occasionally, do we not? And, but we're working on folks who want to help us. And then, and I, and I have reached out to them and said, we want your help. We don't want your just criticism. You know, criticism without any viable solution doesn't make too much sense. So we want to work with citizens on FOIA, on signage, Mike, that you alluded to, on our website. You know, our website isn't perfect, but it's, it's, it's pretty good. And we're working very hard with Mark and others in helping to, to make that the case. There was a train stoppage procedure. There was a train stoppage today. I don't know if anybody got caught up on that. And I don't know exactly what the reason was. I'm told that perhaps it was a locomotive problem. But I asked Anne Marie, do we have any procedures for notification from Union Pacific when these things happen? And we weren't aware of one. So Anne Marie, I appreciate you reaching out, and, and, and we're going to devise one so that if we do have an emergency, of course, Gene and Eric, you're, you guys are going to know about that if, if, if God forbid, somebody gets hit. But you know, that thing was sitting there for what, an hour probably while it, while it crossed? And Gene, I know you're nodding, and I'm going to let you say something in just a moment. The last several months has been so difficult for our partner, Northern Illinois University. And, you know, we saw the resignation of the president, and I just want all of us to try to get behind Lisa Freeman and the new administration at Northern and let them know that we want to continue to work with them. Enough said on that. City Council priorities, what a great team you guys are. I really appreciate you bringing forward, not only to me as your mayor, but to staff, what you think some of the priorities are. And Mike, your idea of agenda building, that's going to help us identify some more priorities. And as we move forward with an expanded program of committees of the whole, in which we will be able to spend more time on key issues, key to this community, I think you're going to find that this city council will move forward on a number of items. Finally, there's a fella in the back here, Jeff Bertell, who has spent 30 years with the City of DeKalb. Jeff's in the control room back there. Hi, Jeff. He has worked with IT, web, public works, et cetera. He's going to be retiring, and I know they're going to have a little cake and coffee, I think, here on Thursday for, for Jeff as he retires from the city. Kate, I know you're hungry, but I'm going to go right up that row again.
I can, I can.
And see if anybody else wants to make a comment. And I do hope that Gene or Eric have something to say about that train. Ruth, anything?
No report.
Dean Frieders?
Briefly, Mayor, on Thursday, July 6, the Environmental Commission will be having a meeting and a public hearing. Part of that hearing will be a discussion of prairie plantings and natural plantings. It is a topic on which the city has received a lot of public input. There've been some residents that have brought forward concerns regarding the positive and negative impacts of that, and that's something the Environmental Commission will be looking at closely. And then ultimately, we anticipate that there may be some policy questions coming back to the city council. I'll defer to Community Development Director Holdeman on the exact time that the public hearing starts, but that is Thursday, July 6, so right after the Fourth of July holiday.
I think that Environmental Commission is going to have a meeting, their regular meeting at four o'clock, and then at five o'clock, right, they're going to move from back here into the city council chambers for that public hearing. Anything else, Dean?
No.
Anne Marie Gora, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. First of all, I wanted to add my congratulations to Jeff Bertell. As he sat here at the front end of the meeting, I thought this is his last board meeting. So he's been able to serve the community for many years. So Jeff, thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Secondly, just want to advise that we're working as staff on a number of significant issues, and I will be working with the mayor to figure out the best prioritization of bringing these items to council. So some of them include the Tiff phase out that we've talked about, the follow-up to STEAM Learning Center, as well as Annie Glidden North Corridor Plan. So these will all, depending upon the mayor's direction, be happening and coming to you within the next two months. So, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Patty Hopson.
I'm also hungry, so no report.
Gene Lowry, our police chief.
Sorry about this, Patty, but here goes. Just, just kind of a safety and general announcement in regard to July 4. It's extremely high service demand for both police and fire. We often see some pretty severe injuries as a result of the inappropriate handling of fireworks. At times, those fireworks are often misinterpreted as other calls. So it puts us in kind of a quandary in response to those calls. So we just ask the citizens to be cognizant of the ordinance and do their best to be good neighbors. Secondly, a shout out to the Islamic Center President, Mohammed Labadi. He and Dr. Rakish came to the police station this morning, again, delivering many sweets such as what came to City Hall. There were some sweets that were of Mediterranean and Middle Eastern origins or recipes, but there were also the good old traditional doughnuts. So there was an effort to reinforce the police stereotype. But the Islamic Center membership and Mohammed Labadi are true friends of the city, and they're looking for ways to build some bridges with us across the board, but with the police department as well. So we look forward to enhancing that relationship. Last but not least, on July 8, the Police Benevolent and Protective Association will be hosting a golf outing at River Heights. It's our, one of our, it is our biggest fundraiser, and the benevolent does many charitable things in the community, and that money is used for those charitable donations or events. So if anyone's interested in attending that golf outing or participating in a foursome, please contact the police station or look at our Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Eric?
First of all, I want to congratulate Jeff Bertell on his retirement and thank him for putting that fine video piece together last minute for me. Next, I'll talk about the train.
Thank you.
I found the train incident. City manager contacted me as I was coming north on Seventh Street. I was able to track down a representative from UP and told me there was a problem with the train, and they expected it to be down in about 40, 45 minutes. What the fire department did is we split our crews in half, so each side of the city had equal fire protection because we knew there would be problems, you know, getting through, you know, to either side of the track. I also did discuss with Chief Lowry, and he was working on some traffic control measures in order to get people through the two underpasses quickly. So we were on top of it, and I believe Tim Holdeman's going to work on getting a meeting set up with UP to resolve that down the road. Finally, I got one more thing here. And I want to talk about a recent tragic fire, and that happened in London. Early in the morning on June 14, 2017, more than 200 firefighters responded to a massive high-rise fire in a 24-story building, the Grenfell Tower in London. To date, the fire has claimed about 79 lives, and many more have been injured. The fire has been believed to have been started by a faulty freezer. We had the exact same fire here last week, a faulty freezer. We didn't have that kind of damage. Could the fire have been prevented? Fires happen. Could the large loss been prevented? Most definitely. And those are prevented by building codes. Some of the problems they had over there, many of the survivors said they cannot hear the alarms going off or were not present. We do not waver on fire alarms here. We make sure they're loud and make sure they go off. Fire sprinklers. In a high-rise in our area, we're going to have sprinklers. Same thing with energy-efficient cladding, which caused a fire to jump many stories quickly. We do, our building codes prevent that. Today, I want to talk about what's going on over there. London officials, they're trying to play catch-up. Currently, they'd have identified 60 buildings that have the same issues, and it's a Friday, they'd already displaced 800 people and evacuated five different high-rises. We had a problem evacu, or displacing eight last week. I can only imagine what 800 would do. In 2015, council approved the commercial Billy Norton inspection program. To date, we've done about 700 buildings in town and found many violations. Most recently, the City of DeKalb enacted the 2015 International Code Set, which is the most up-to-date code set available, and I would hope in 2021, the council would look again for the next revision. So thank you for your commitment to fire safety and thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Our interim finance director, Jeff Wilkens.
Nothing at this time.
No report. Joellen Charlton, Community Development.
Two quick things. I also want to congratulate Jeff on his retirement and wish him well. In addition to a lot of the presentations that we put together that involve the PowerPoint presentations, it takes quite an effort by that group back there to take those and put them together and make them available for our presentations, both here and at the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission meetings as well. So wish him well. Also, to build on what Chief Hicks was talking about, the cladding material that was used on the exterior of that building came about as a result of people wanting to improve the appearance of the, of the building partially, and also because they were hoping to make the building more attractive to others in the, in the nearby community, despite the fact that it didn't have a lot of good fire prevention capabilities. In the article, it talks a lot about being business-friendly to the developers in the community and not having them do the extra provisions for the material that would have made it fire-retardant. So when we talk about being business-friendly in the community, I just want to, you know, keep telling everyone that it doesn't mean that we're ignoring the codes or stepping the codes to the side. Instead, what we do, we try to do is work with people to become code-compliant, give them time, talk about options, and keep everything focused towards improvements that are code-compliant. So I just wanted to build on what Chief Hicks said in that regard.
Tim Holdeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to give an update on the Illinois State Projects. Illinois 23 resurfacing is currently delayed because of the lack of a budget. Our Kishawaki Bike Path project may be delayed. It's anticipated to begin construction July 10. So if there is a budget, that project will be able to proceed. We are moving- We are moving forward on our street maintenance project, our local street maintenance project. And as Brian Favor mentioned, we are moving forward on the construction of our water mains for 2017. And remember, there is a meeting on July 5, beginning at 6:00 PM at 20, I'm sorry, at 12:16 Market Street to review the impacts of that project. Also, would like to thank the Community Foundation for their tour of the South Kishawaki Branch watershed. Outstanding tour with Dean Johnson and Anita Zerberg. Would highly recommend it, it's an annual event, and would recommend our residents and others to go on that tour. Also, wanted to say thank you to the Kishawaki United Way for their day of caring on the 22nd. We had three individuals who assisted us in doing some landscaping. That was very, very much appreciated from them. And then lastly, I'd like to give an update on our Asset Management Plan, Street and Fleet Project. We're moving forward on that project. We're making good progress. We did have a little bit of a hiccup. We were basically, the IMS consultants that we had to do the street modeling, the pavement modeling, were non-responsive to us. They apparently didn't have time to do the project, and so we got a local engineer, Engineering Enterprise Incorporated, to assist us. They have experience in Paver Pro, which is the product, the software that we're using. And so without any increase in cost, we're moving forward with them on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Human Resources Director, Chris Randall.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to congratulate Jeff Bertell, his retirement. 30 years of service with the city is a lifetime of wonderful accomplishments that will be remembered from years to come. And if you think that we are giving him a break on his last week, that is not true. He's still working and helping us go through all of those to-do lists before you go kind of thing. So thanks, Jeff, for helping HR this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our IT Director, Mark Thorson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to just give a brief update on the Enterprise Resource Planning project that's going on. We just recently had a question-and-answer meeting, pre-proposal meeting as it is, recently, and had a lot of good questions. We compiled all those questions with answers and posted that back up on the site as an addendum. And we're keeping our ears open, just in case there's any other questions that the proposing vendors may have. I want to say we had at least seven represented at that meeting, and I know we're close to a dozen vendors that are interested in this project, so we're really excited about that. And I know it's, there's been quite a bit of thanks, and I would like to throw my thanks in there as well to Jeff Bertell as his teammate. And I know I've only been here a short time, but I know he's done quite a lot of good work for the city, and we really appreciate it, and congratulate him on his new adventures. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I understand that we do need to recess for executive session, so I'd like to have a motion for approval to hold an executive session to discuss executive session minutes as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C 21. I need a motion to hold our executive session. So moved. Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Markwart. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion passes, we will now move into executive session.